Calling the San Carlos Planning Commission meeting, June 3rd to order. Will you please join me and pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Would we have roll call now?
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Commissioner Roof?
Here.
Commissioner Yakapony is absent this evening, for the record. Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
And Chair Bradley.
Here. First item on the agenda, and you can get an agenda back in the corner if you haven't received one, is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Planning Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, as allowed by the Brown Act in California, Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the Planning Commission's general policy is to refer items to the planning staff for their attention, or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Next item is, is there any public comment? Not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move ahead with the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was on May 6th. Any changes or corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes as so stated.
Second.
Mr. Bergman seconded.
Commissioner Dugan?
Approved.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you. Minutes stand approved as read. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. The procedures for public hearings on the Planning Commission. The staff will present a report on the history, physical features, and the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant may then make a presentation, and thereafter, interested members of the community and the audience may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had their opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor will be held at that time. The Planning Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendations. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice, or in written correspondence, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form, found by the door in the corner, hand it to the recording secretary, or any of us up there in front. And the speaker should come up to the microphone to speak, since the meeting is being recorded, and this will assist the planning staff in preparing the minutes. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, but it's a big one. It's 817 Walnut Street, which is APN 050-163-190. It's a consideration of a resolution from the Planning Commission recommending to the City Council to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation thereof, and monitoring and reporting a program. A resolution recommending the City Council amend the zoning map to change the site from MU-CD, which is Mixed Use Plan Development, no, Mixed Use Downtown Core, to Plan Development Zoning, and approve the associated Plan Development Plan. Then conduct design review, conditional use permit for the affordable housing incentives, transportation demand management plan, and a recommendation to the City Council to approve the disposition, development, and loan agreement for use of the site as affordable housing. No small task, and we have Lisa here to present, representing the staff. Thank you.
Welcome. Yes, we gave you a very long title there to introduce. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner, excuse me, and I'll be giving you an overview of the proposal for 817 Walnut Street. Briefly for some background, the city acquired the site in 2002 in a goal, an effort to increase the supply of affordable housing. The city issued a request for qualifications and selected Catholic charities to develop an affordable housing apartment building at the site. The site is located along Walnut Street, just adjacent to the city's South Plaza parking lot and behind Bianchini's Market. The current site area is 7,741 square feet, and the site currently includes a seven-unit apartment building. The project does include adding a portion of the South Plaza parking lot to the site to create a 10,544-square-foot lot. The property is owned, Mixed Use Downtown Core, which allows up to 50 units per acre, or 12 residential units at this site. As you indicated, the request is for a Plan Development Zoning, as well as Plan Development Permit, Conditional Use Permit for the Affordable Housing Incentives and City Density Bonus, Design Review, Transportation Demand Management Plan, and the SEQA evaluation, a mitigative negative declaration was prepared. I'm going to start with the Plan Development Zoning, and then I'll walk through each of the entitlements for you. So the request is to rezone the site, Plan Development, from Mixed Use Downtown Core, as well as approve the Plan Development Plan, which is the development plans that you have in front of you. The project does comply with the city's development regulations, with the exception of height. The 50-foot height regulation, they're proposing a height of 52 feet 6 inches to the top of the parapet, and 58 feet 6 inches to the top of the tower elements. Open space, the applicant proposes to provide 1,345 square feet, or 2,400 square feet is required. As well, given the tight site configuration, they're not proposing any short-term bicycle parking. However, they do exceed the long-term bicycle parking on-site. Five is required, and they're providing seven long-term spaces. The Conditional Use Permit, I think this is the first one we've reviewed for the city's density bonus and the city's affordable housing incentives. Previously, you've reviewed projects that take advantage of the state density bonus. And so in this situation, we do have a density bonus that this site, as I indicated, is allowed 12 units by right. And as all those 12 units would be proposed as affordable, they're entitled to one additional unit for each affordable unit, or an additional 12 units. Those bonus units could be market rate. However, the applicant in negotiations with the city intends to have 23 units as affordable, and one unit would be for an onsite property manager. The bonus units do not count towards the floor area, although this project does comply with the floor area at the site. And then the Affordable Housing Incentives also allow flexible parking standards, as well as setback allowances to accommodate those additional units. I'll go into a little more detail on the parking calculations. Affordable developments, the city's incentives do allow some limited reductions in the parking requirements, but it doesn't have guidance on what those reductions are. So under the code, the parking requirement is .75 parking spaces per studio unit, and one parking space for every two-bedroom unit, as well as one space for every four units for guest parking. So under the Affordable Housing Standard Parking Requirements, they'd be required to provide 24 parking spaces on-site. If this were a market rate development in the mixed-use district, they'd be required to provide 32 parking spaces on-site, so just to compare the two. And they're proposing to provide 20 parking spaces on-site. That would be combined with two surface parking spaces, one of which is an accessible parking space, and 18 parking spaces in a mechanical stacking system. The parking will be accessed via the 20-foot-wide driveway from Walnut Street. Staff is supportive of this requested parking reduction from 24 to 20 spaces, as the units will serve very low and extremely low-income households, and the development is located in close proximity to transit, as well as essentially in the heart of our downtown, so with many services, nearby parks as well. Charities Housing does note that many of their low and extremely low-income persons cannot afford cars, and their other studio developments experience very low parking demand. And I can have them expand on that if you have questions.
Lisa, just a quick question. So it's, so 32 of this was all market rate, and then 24 because it's 100% low-income housing? Is that correct?
The code just specifies for affordable housing developments, and so since this does qualify as such. And then in addition to that, they're entitled to parking reductions as well, under the incentive section. So they do get to take advantage of those.
That's the incentive section of the San Carlos zoning?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so you also have the design review authority before you. There's some landscaping in the front of the site, as well as the rear, with some new trees, shrubs, and ground cover. I did indicate the 20-foot-wide drive aisle would access the parking that's located tucked under the building towards the rear. And then there's also a decorative entry trellis, where you also see some additional landscaping accessing from Walnut Street. And then this is the decorative perspective drawing. As you see, there's a lot of projecting bay-window elements that help break up and provide some relief along all sides of the elevation, the sides in the rear and the front. There's also a terrace with a trellis element on the fourth floor, an entry trellis at the ground level that will also have decorative landscaping on it as well. And then the mechanical parking system, as I indicated, tucked under towards the rear, will also, at the upper section of that, have some metal screens to help screen that from the view. And there's also a solid wood fence along that side property line that would be adjacent to South Plaza to help screen as well. And then the stone element will be located along the towers. And the project architect is here for a more detailed discussion on the architectural details. And then here's the front elevation, just in the standard plan view. You see large storefront windows at the ground elevation. And then the left side, this is the side that faces an existing apartment building located to the north of the site. And here you see the open kind of hallways accessing the individual units. And those tower elements, right here, their stone is stucco, but they will actually be stone. We've asked the architect to revise that. So rather than have the stone at the base, they'll run up the sides of all those tower elements. And this is the view that would be seen from the South Plaza parking lot. Another item required by code is a Transportation Demand Management Plan. The city requires that to reduce vehicle trip generation by 20% over the standard rates. The applicant's TDM plan was prepared by Farr and Pierce, and they anticipated 20% reduction based on the location of the property within very close proximity to restaurants, stores, parks, direct routes to transit, and within very close proximity of the site, good pedestrian connectivity, and then the onsite bicycle parking. As indicated, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared. They found that with implementation of mitigation measures, the project would not result in any significant environmental impacts. And mitigation measures are relating to air quality. It's really during construction. Methods to reduce any impacts with high-quality construction methods, best management practices. Biological, essentially protecting nesting birds during construction on adjacent trees. Cultural resources, in the event any archaeological remains are found, there's measures in place to protect those and halt construction. With geological, the requirement is to follow the geotechnical recommendations through construction, and as well as with hazardous materials to abate any materials that are found during construction, most likely asbestos and lead-based paint. The mitigated negative declaration was circulated for review and comment from February 26th through March 18th. During that time, we received three comments. Those were relating to concerns with traffic, parking, building height, affordable housing, the parking lift system, overall pace of development in San Carlos, construction period noise, and traffic disruption. The SEQA consultant evaluated those comments and prepared a response to comment memo, which is included in your packet. The public comments did not identify any new significant effects, and the significance of those identified impacts remains unchanged. So no further SEQA analysis was warranted due to those comments. The applicant and the city also hosted a community outreach meeting on March 21st. That meeting was well-attended by adjacent neighbors and property owners. Comments received at that meeting included concern with the building height, concern with parking, noting that that street is already quite congested. And there was several comments from the members participating for support for affordable housing. We mailed the public notice to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site, is also published in the newspaper. And staff has not received any comments as of this meeting. All right, and we have three, excuse me, four separate motions before you. So those should be four separate actions. The first would be relating to the SEQA determination. That's a recommendation to the City Council. The second relates to the ordinance, again, a recommendation to council on the Plan Development Ordinance. The third is approval of design review, conditional use permit, TDM plan. And all of these are based on the findings that are attached to your packet and the conditions. And then finally, just recommending the disposition, development, and loan agreement for use of the site as affordable housing. And it's not a load agreement, it's a loan agreement, just on my typo. I do have in the audience Representative Dan Wu from Catholic Charities. He'll give a brief presentation, can answer some questions. The project architect's also here. Rebecca Ald, who is our SEQA consultant, can answer your questions relating to the mitigated negative declaration. And Martin Romo's our Housing and Economic Development Manager. If you have any questions on the disposition, development, and loan agreement, or specifically on the city's affordable housing or policies, he could answer those questions. So at this point, I can either answer your questions, or we can turn over to the applicant for their presentation.
Yeah, which of these are the ones we're recommending to City Council? And is like, design review, what we're actually approving, and the rest are recommendations?
The first two are recommendations, the third is your action. And so your action is design review, the use permit for the incentives, and the TDM plan.
Okay.
And then the last one's also a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant, then. I can always come back when you have questions.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's start with, come up, sir. Tell us your name.
My name is Dan Wu. I'm with Charities Housing. And we're an affiliate of Catholic charities. And I just want to talk a little bit about our organization, or what we do and how we do. And our project architect is also here in the audience, and he'll talk specifically about the design of the project. Now, if I just forward, here we go. The, so, we are a part of Catholic charities. We were formed back in 1993, and really it's because Catholic charities, being a very large social service agency, what we saw was the great need of a lot of the clients that came through the door, is because of stable and affordable housing. So we started the effort back in 93. I actually joined the organization back in 1995, and have been there ever since. Currently, we own and operate about 1,200 units in and around Santa Clara County. And we have almost 200 units that's in construction now. And then we have about 250 units that we're trying to entitle, this being one of them. So we do develop, we own, and we manage all the properties that we have. Our property management is, they have onsite staff. We also provide training, and so they're really keeping an eye on the community itself, as well as keeping track of compliance, making sure all the residents meet income requirements, and coordinate with the service providers to provide services for the residents. And our services, really, it's our partnership with Catholic charities. And they are the service provider, and so we contract with them. They provide a service coordinator on-site, and they provide services, as well as educational classes, as appropriate for the resident, or whatever the residents may express an interest.
Can I stop you right there for just a second? When you say "training," is that like adult educational training whenever it comes to scolastic? Or is it more of a lifestyle and living arrangement training? I forget what the name, I forget the name, the whole name for that.
It really depends on the resident's need. So every resident may be different. So, you know, do we have, so the service provider, if, let's say, a resident is hoarding the unit, in the unit, so the service provider would come in, help resident clean up, and do all of that. If a resident, sometimes there are a group of residents who may be interested in, say, financial education, then we coordinate with a volunteer who come on-site to provide that.
Okay.
Just depends on people's interests.
Yeah, before you jump into the specifics of this development, if you could just speak to your organization's screening, selection process, and how you train, and what programs you have in place to ensure it's a neutral process, no discrimination, et cetera?
I'm going to get to that, actually, just right after this. And so this, I'm just going to kind of talk briefly. Really, we were trying to provide as many affordable units on the site. I mean, we all know it's a very small site. And we try to provide a range of affordability, from extremely low-income, meaning folks who are earning less than 30% of the area median income, to up to a maximum of 60% of the area median income, so that we have a cross-spectrum of folks that we try to target to, whether they're a service worker or otherwise. So as far as affordability that I just mentioned, the rents are roughly going from $735 to $1,500, and from 30% to 60% of area median income. And they jump at about an increment of roughly $250. And it's what the rents are if it was open today. In terms of how we select residents, so we always work with the local jurisdictions in terms of what the local jurisdiction's interests are. And in this case, we'll be working with the city. And the city has a priority for people who live and currently work here. And we'll also do outreach in conjunction with the city, city staff, in terms of who is already on a BMR waiting list, and they have an interest. And so then we get into, probably get six months prior to the building actually finished, then we start to do our outreach and getting people qualified, if you will. And so usually, we go through a lottery process, because we never have, you know, enough units for all the people that are interested. Usually, the ratio is anywhere from 10 to 1, to as bad as 100 to 1. So sometimes the odds are not with you. And so once the people have gone through the lottery process, then we pick, once we get through the top, then we go to the top. Every resident, go through these four things that's listed here. It's, we qualify them on income, we check their credit history, we do a criminal background check, and then we also do a past landlord reference check. And so all of those things added together, we make sure that they qualify. So we also work with the city staff in terms of the marketing plan, so that people know exactly what it takes to qualify for a unit. So that's how we do the residence election. And then as far as the current resident that's living there now, they'll be, they are entitled to relocation, and a relocation plan has already been done. And all the residents there have already been advised. And so they will be offered relocation benefits before starting new construction. And they'll also be offered the opportunity to come back if they qualify.
Are those housing choice vouchers for relocation? No?
No, they literally get cash.
Okay.
And then, as Lisa had mentioned earlier, we did have the community meeting. Generally, we thought it was very well-received in the community. And so we hope the Planning Commission will agree with our proposal. And then now I'm going to turn it over to our architect, John Sheen.
I have a question for you first. So we have one, two, three, five different levels of incomes, right? And you're saying 60% are below for this. Are there any, is there any preference given? Or is everything treated equally from the 60% to the 30%? I mean, is anything reserved for the 30%? Is there, is there any, or is it just one whole block, and whoever gets it gets it, and we could end up with everyone being 60% and no 30% people being served?
No. So on our proposal, it's very specific, how many units are in each tier? I think for 30%, we have three.
Okay.
And then for 60%, we also have three. And the rest are generally broken between 40 and 50.
Yeah, I was looking for that. I didn't see it, but it's very welcome to be buried in this packet.
It was a big picture.
A concern of mine was that there would be some reserve for very low-income.
They are definitely segregated. It's not one big pot.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciated your overview of your selection process, and you guys have turned that crank a lot of times. So it seems to be a well-worn process. But you know, the city also maintains that list, and it sounds like you draw from that list, but it's, you know, how does that actually work? Because the city's not maintaining the list, then you're drawing from that list, and then you're running your own process. So maybe the better way to think, like, so two years after this is built, once things are up and running, will you just be drawing from that list? Or do you still kind of run your additional process as you draw kind of a basket of candidates from that list?
So it's, depends on the list itself. So what happens is, let's say we, at the initial process, 500 people come through the door, and we do the lottery. And since we have 24 units here, we'll probably keep, say, 200 people on the list. And then the other 300, we're probably not going to keep on our list, just simply because, on our experience, the turnover each year is roughly 10%. So we know, if we kept the names on our list, it becomes stale. And people move, people just, then we have, if we kept them on the list, we actually have to go find them. We can't just say, well, we tried once, and they didn't call. And so we kept, keep maybe 200, and we'll process those. Out of that, maybe 100 will go through the process, and then the other 100 we keep as a waitlist on the property. And then as units become vacant, we'll process from that 100. And when that list goes down to, say, only 10 left, or 20 left, then we open up the list, and we get a bunch of names again. And then we go through another lottery, and then they be added to that original. And then we go through another lottery and then they be added to that original leftover 10.
I see. But all that sounds like your list. Is this consistent and can we speak to how the city is involved in that process on an ongoing basis?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Martin Romo, housing manager. So we maintain our own internal list, which is currently at about 1,500 households. And what we do is the city takes down the information of each particular household that's been added to the list and takes a rough estimation as self-reported income. But we don't actually verify any of the information for these particular households. So as with any other BMR unit that becomes available in the city, the city will notify that there's a new project that's available. And we'll send the description of the project and those who may potentially qualify. And then we'll follow, they will have five days to let us know that they intend to be a part of this process because they know that they could potentially qualify for the unit or they'd like to see if they could. And what the city does is maintain, is kind of refine that list to determine if we notice the first 100, 500, whatever it may be, to get it down to a list that then we will then hand over to Charities Housing or any other developer of BMR units in town. And they will then do their own internal processes to make sure they actually qualify, you know, checking against those four different requirements that he articulated.
I see. So basically, if you will, your list is a lead generation list and you've outsourced the qualification process.
Essentially.
Okay.
I do have a question though, and it's probably maybe because we've been looking at this for affordable housing area for a long time. But it says in our packet that there's seven units there and only two are occupied if we have a list of 1,000. So why, I'm sure we have some people that are qualified and we stopped taking tenants?
Well, that's an excellent question. So the reason that this project came to be and we came through this request for proposals process is that we were faced with the decision of, do we address the deferred maintenance of this property, of which there was a lot? And it was whether we want to put that money back into getting these units into working order or whether we wanted to redevelop the property and get it to a place where we can increase the number of units and the number of households served. And so we went the latter option, which was brought here today. So we haven't been getting people back in these units because they require a lot of updating data.
All right. Thank you. I really want, I appreciate that.
I might be jumping ahead, but it's a lease agreement, a dollar a year for you. How long is, would, typically would the lease be and what happens at the end of the lease?
So the lease, the terms of the lease agreement have been, are still being completely liberated, but it's about six, it's going to likely be 60 to 75 years at a dollar a year. At the end of that period, the improvements in the land would then go back to the city.
Thank you. The architect's here.
Evening commissioners. My name is John Sheen from Studio E Architects. I will go very quickly and I'm happy to answer specific questions you may have, but I won't belabor the design. I do want to point out just a couple of things about the way the building's laid out, which might be of interest. The, there's a kind of community room towards the street. That's the big room you see, well, towards the street. And that's the one that in the elevations has all the glazing. So that's kind of a rec space, lounge area for the residents. Immediately adjacent to that, near the front door, which is actually on the side of the building in this case, and access via that sort of pergola is the manager, property manager's office. It is elevator served. There's an elevator in the center of the building. There's a trash room that's served by a trash chute from the upper floors. And then moving back, you see the puzzle lift parking, the mechanical parking system. And at the very rear of the building are things like the mechanical room with the central, with the boiler for hot water, bike storage room and the electrical room. Is there another slide? That one. Okay, it's me. Then it's, the upper floors are essentially a repeat on floors 2, 3, 4. Studios, these are about 350, 360 square feet, depending on whether a particular unit has a bay window or not. There's a little terrace on the south side, north side of the second floor. It's like an outdoor seating area with some landscape surrounding. And then at the very upper floor, towards the street, there is this terrace associated with the laundry room. There's a shared laundry room for all the residents. Thought there is that while you're doing your laundry, you could, you could, you know, read a book or through a magazine or chat with a friend on that roof terrace there, or upper level terrace, we should say. And then the manager's unit is at the extreme rear of the property at that level. This is a typical unit. It's very efficient. It meets all of the ADA requirements for accessibility. And then views of the outside, which have been described previously. So again, I'm very happy to answer any specifics you might have about the project as we move forward.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yes.
One is probably, we'll probably be talking about for a little bit, is the parking stacking. That's one that I'm really curious about. One, how it looks. Two, how it's maintained. Should something go wrong, that type of thing. And then the other one is, most of these types of buildings, there are a lot of senior citizens in there. We only have one accessible parking space. So it seems, it seems to me that we might want to consider doing more than one accessible parking space, considering what the usual clientele of these affordable buildings are. But that's just a comment. I guess we can discuss it, but I don't know if you have any comments on that.
So we parked per the regs for the number of accessible spaces. So it's one for the, for a van. Having said that, because there is a loading, loading spot there, the two parking spaces on either side could essentially be understood as accessible parking. So that could take us from one spaces to two. It wouldn't, the puzzle lift or the mechanical system doesn't really qualify as accessible parking. So that, so we'd be challenged on that in terms of trying to make any of that accessible. It does not meet any, any sort of ADA regs. Yeah. So in terms of like the, how does it appear? I think from the city's parking lot, the six-foot-high fence along the property line would screen the majority of the lower portions. And then when the cars are in the up position and the stacked position, there is a kind of metal louvered screen that will screen the cars that are in the upper portions of the system. So I think it'll be pretty invisible, if you will.
So are these like electric or are they mechanical in some way? Or they, you know, because I, if I were living here, I'd be wondering, you know, I know it's unlikely because I'd be working, but anyway, if I say I'm living there, I'm working and I go downstairs, my car's on top and it's broken and...
The residents will need to be trained on how to use this thing. Because yeah, it's pushing buttons and the thing robotically moves cars around till the one that you're after shows up and you then back it out. So it'll, it'll be a little bit of training, but I mean, it's, these systems are becoming more and more common in the Bay Area and in Southern California where my office is. So I think while presently they're kind of new and new-fangled, they soon won't be very new-fangled, actually.
How many of those systems have you personally installed on your projects?
Exactly one before this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how long ago was that?
A couple, two years probably.
And what was the general experience around it?
You know, it took a little bit of training and then people are like, okay with it, yeah.
Is it still operating today?
Yes, as far as I know.
Okay.
When I left this morning.
Okay. And so this isn't just a matter of, you know, two cars in one space and the upper ones there and the, so it literally like is a giant carousel?
It's like, yeah, it's, yeah, they move front to back and this way, so it's...
Okay. And do we have any visuals of what this thing, you know?
I mean, we didn't provide that. We have, we have details in the drawing package that was submitted to planning in terms of heights and widths and et cetera, et cetera.
Just, I guess, let's talk about robotic parking for just a little bit then. I guess, I think our commission would benefit staff from seeing these at some point. Like go, do we have one installed in the city anywhere? I'm not aware of one yet.
I mean, the manufacturer that we're specifying has, you know, YouTube videos and on their website, so you can...
Do they have an uptime rating?
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, that'd be really important to know, right? And what's the longevity?
Right, right, of course. Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, because I share that exact concern. I mean, this seems like it is, you know, a method of, you know, achieving a parking ratio that might not otherwise be realistic in a specific plan. And so the question has to be on how will this be maintained? Who's gonna pay for the maintenance? Will it really be running 25 years from now? Or will it all just come to rest and be four spaces instead of 16 or whatever? I mean, that's the concern I think we have to have as a city because these do seem to be, you know, gonna become ever more popular as people try to force more into small footprints. So I don't know. I almost feel like this is an area we should study as a city, not necessarily on this project. But it just seems like these robotic parking contraptions are gonna become more and more common. And we should, you know, my question that would always guide my thinking here is, what will happen there in 25 years? Will that thing really be running? Will someone still be paying to have it maintained? Or will it have come to rest as four parking spaces with a bunch of outdated metal crap around it?
We actually, staff, as there was quite a bit of interest in having parking, mechanical parking systems, we had a vendor come and give a presentation to city staff. And we were quite impressed with the system and how quickly they respond to maintenance issues and repair items. So the vendor's very well-versed in that. They're doing a lot of projects in San Francisco. And although we don't see it much here in the peninsula, I can tell you that Redwood City, the majority of those new developments are taking advantage of the parking systems. And they're having valets there to assist when it's for public parking in the off-hours. So we've also had a few, when I was working in Redwood City, I gave, I visited with a few of those projects, saw how successfully they're working. I think one of the concerns from a planner is looking forward and trying to figure out what is parking in the future? What are driving habits in the future? And are we still gonna have, you know, large areas of parking? Or are people gonna be taking more advantage of public transportation, car shares, Uber lifts? And so we see this as kind of a good opportunity to maximize the site with parking lifts. And I do have the brochure that the applicant submitted, if you wanted to glance at that.
And I'm sure it works. I guess to crystallize my concern, what enforcement mechanism does the city have to, you know, when this thing breaks and someone decides it's not economical to fix it, what is this, what's the city's recourse at that point to make sure we still have parking?
Well, the, I think the mechanism that I see in the documentation is that you are approving a site through the development application process that has a certain number of parking spaces. So they have to require that number of parking spaces. So if the system stops working, they'll be out of compliance. So the city will have enforcement tools there. The other way, because it is a for rent project, I would think that the management of the building or the developer who has the long-term lease, we could certainly include requirements in the lease that the parking lifts be maintained. City has an interest in that because we will be getting the building in 60 or 75 years, depending on how, how long that lease is. So we would want it to be maintained too. So because we're gonna own it, if we don't want to get a rundown lift system, we want one that's been maintained. Similar to like an elevator, you know? When you get a building with an elevator, you'll probably want it inspected and have all the maintenance records. And I don't know what the OSHA standards or what's required for these lifts, but there might be additional standards that, similar to elevator standards, that are required to, you know, annual inspections and things of that nature, so.
I mean, that's what it seems like to me is like this is, we're sitting here talking about, you know, like elevators in 1910 or something, right? And we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, in the next 30 years, a whole regime's gonna come up to solve problems that we are now just walking into blindly. Is this kind of my instinct on this? So, you know, it just feels to me like we're gonna just start seeing these over and over. And, you know, this one is probably the safest that we'll ever see because it's proposed for senior housing. It's right downtown. Even if this didn't work properly, it probably, you know, isn't catastrophic. But the, but just so I understand, if this thing stops, that basically becomes a building department code violation enforcement action for the city to make them fix it? Is that...
Building or planning, it could be because it's a requirement of the project. It might be, enforcement might come through planning. But either way, the city would have remedies to force them to make it operable.
And I hope there's a budget item for the individual who gets to train all the seniors on adopting this new technology. The, I have a lot of personal experience trying to get the seniors in my life on the new technology and it's hit or miss.
I have a few related questions. The noise level when the machine is operating, like to get some feeling for that in terms of the impact on the neighborhood. Although I did note that the location of the garage is sort of not facing another residential unit. So in this case, it's not of super sensitivity, but it's still, I wonder if it makes it loud.
Yeah, I can't speak directly to the decibel level or whatever, but I think where it's located, it's in, you know, the best possible location relative to noise pollution, if you will. Yeah.
The access, I understand is not ADA compliant, but still we would expect quite a few elderly people to be interested in these units. And so maybe they're not needing the full ADA, but what, how limited is the access? I mean, do you have to squeeze past and walk on a metal gangplank? Or how does that work?
Yeah, so the, so the car, your car is delivered to a spot where a normal, you know, able-bodied person can reasonably get out of it. You don't have to squeeze past things or it shifts it around.
Like drive it into a, into an elevator or anything like that?
It's not that, not that challenging, I would say.
So I, I just want to put this out there for consideration through the chair. We have four items on the agenda. We're pretty much stuck on one, which we do have control over design review, right? Which we have a lot of questions that maybe the staff got a presentation and we didn't get a presentation and we don't have a lot of information on. So what I would recommend is that we maybe look at the other three items. If they, hopefully they won't be as difficult and then decide whether or not we want to continue the design review and ask for a presentation on the lift system. So I just want to put, that's not a motion, but I just want to put that out there as a possibility, considering I think the other three things are going to be a lot easier to get through. And I don't feel comfortable frankly right now until I know more about this lift system to go forward. Anyway, that's just my idea.
Let's move ahead now and we'll see where it goes. I may have missed it, but are you planning on solar panels on the roof?
Yes, we're, we are planning for both solar hot water system on the roof as well as photovoltaics. So, yes.
Great.
I have a question about elevators. You know, this is a four-story senior project, you know, a large number of units, one elevator, right? No redundancy on that. Elevators do go out, I'm rather familiar with, there, you know, there will be days when the elevator's not working. And just, when is a second elevator required on a project like this? Does that happen? I mean, when...
Well, not on a project like this. It's generally based on number of units. That's how, I mean, if you talk to an elevator sales rep, they'll tell you it's based on increment. So for 24 units, a single elevator's absolutely fine.
And then just for my own benefit, like, you know, is it 50 units? Like, what's the magic number when you...
It rolls out at about 40 or 50 units to go to a second. And then it goes to the number of stories as well, because you're talking about wait time. And then it, and then it goes to population. Is it, you know, is it all studios? Is it a family project? So there's a number of things that they put in, but generally the rule of thumb is like 40 or 50 before you get a second, a second elevator. One thing, just to kind of correct the record, this is not a seniors-only project. This is a mixed population project.
Right.
Yeah, just to clear that up.
No, I know. I just read that it, I just read in here that there's often a lot of seniors in these types of projects, but that it was mixed, yeah.
I thought it was principally designed as a senior, low-income project.
So when we started working with the city on the RFQ, it was not a senior-only project. And based on our experience, are there a certain percentage of folks who are residing in...
in these non-restricted seniors? Absolutely. And, but it's not 100% restricted.
Chair, I just wanted to make a comment on the parking puzzle lift system. You have approved at least three projects in the recent past that included parking lift systems. One, I think it's South Laurel, 1633 Laurel, you recalled? I know they had it at 560 El Camino, which was my project. And then another project on St. Carlos Avenue, maybe 1525 St. Carlos Avenue. But we are happy to bring a vendor to a future meeting to provide additional information because I know there's going to be a few more projects coming in after this one that will be proposing parking systems. But I just want to remind you that you've approved at least three in the near, in the past.
My bigger concern on this one is we're talking about affordable housing and there's always concern about upkeep, maintenance with affordable housing. So I'm really overly, maybe overly concerned about the parking system, but that's why I have the heightened awareness of it for this time, just.
Certainly. And I think we do have the opportunity, since the city is a partner in this as well through the disposition, development, and loan agreement, to talk about some of those maintenance items as the city attorney mentioned, to make sure it's well-maintained when the city does take over the development in the future.
And, you know, I think those three projects you mentioned, I only recall one before this commission in the last year since I've been involved. So I'm asking, because does that mean they're more than a year old, so they're installed now? So we do have them in the city?
I know the one, the construction was a bit delayed because they were waiting for the map to be final, but it's under construction. 560 is probably the one on El Camino that you recall being approved. And then the Laurel Street one, I believe, is in, in operation?
That's one we didn't approve.
Is 560 at El Camino and Holly? Because they came back and withdrew their robotic parking.
No, they withdrew the bundled, unbundled system, but the parking lift system is still in place.
That is still in place. Okay.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions? There are other consultants of the applicants here. Gregory Lampier, do you have a representative?
So the city's Sequoque consultant is here, just if you have questions. She doesn't have a presentation ready.
Okay, the Sequoque.
I have another question, sort of related to the parking, which is that the footprint of this project takes out, I think I counted about 13 parking spots in the, what I call the Bianchini's lot. And so that's a minus 13 in addition that this project brings.
It's called South Plaza. It's a city public parking lot. The Bianchini's market does own a portion of the front area, but anything kind of beyond the market is the city's. We're working with Watree Consultants, who's kind of the renowned parking consultant in the area. And they've come up with several plans to try to reconfigure that lot. It may be that there's angled parking instead of 90-degree parking and that some of those drive aisles are quite wide. So they've come up with some iterations that maybe loses two or three parking spaces, but not to the extent of the whole aisle that is there currently. So we're trying to maximize getting that parking back in place. We've also met with the Bianchini's market ownership, not the property ownership, but the market ownership. And they're also open to reconfiguring their parking layout to kind of maximize and connect with the cities as well.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Go to the public.
I just have a question on the lease itself, because who's negotiating that? Is that through your office, Craig?
So the lease terms were brought to the city council in closed session, and they will be ultimately negotiated and decided at city council for adoption essentially as part of the development agreement. But it's, what the developer would like is 75 years, and we were proposing a 60 plus some form of extension. And the city's open to that potentially. So it seems that the council is likely to go with that and at that, at that dollar lease term.
Okay, but then it'll be the city attorney will actually think through like, things like enforcement mechanisms and what happens if, you know, this doesn't, you know, live up to the initial understanding of below-market rate housing?
Right, yeah. And throughout the course of the 60 to 75 years, we're still essentially the landlord, we still own the land the entire time, so we'd have the remedies available.
It'll be, it'll be more like a land lease type of a lease where we have, we can add those types of terms into the lease, like to maintain, maintain the property. And we could specifically include the lifts, I would think. But I, the lease hasn't, the lease form has not been prepared yet, so. But we, I mean, we have a precedent for this. It's not really a city. I mean, we do have other long-term leases in the city where we've land leased, 800 Britton and where the Burger King and Izzy's is. There's, we have a land, long-term lease there. So those are the models that we've, we've used before. And, you know, that's not our long-term lease, but the Samtrans, JPB, and the Transit Village, the Trestle Apartments are a long-term lease for residential, for residential housing too. On the Office Depot Lot, which used to be a fire station, is also in the same category. So we do have a few, we have experience doing this and, but, you know, each lease is kind of unique, and this one will have the, take into account the type of development, so.
Got it. I just noticed, you know, when you go out decades like that, you don't always know who you're dealing with, right? So, you know, Catholic Charities, certainly a fine organization, but might be different in 50 years. And so obviously, I, you know, would encourage that we look through the enforcement mechanisms and what happens if kind of the initial charter of this understanding isn't, isn't lived up to.
You know, sometime that organizational aspect that you're talking about, if in some, for some event, the current lessee at Catholic Charities decides they want to get out of this business, there's the assignment clauses that we usually have require our consent and require a suitable successor tenant.
I imagine there's many elements to this agreement that are sort of out of the scope of the planning commission purview. But one bit that might be in our purview is to make sure that there's accommodation in that agreement that, for the upkeep of the building in a way that makes it consistent, compatible with the neighborhood and the, and the city. Something like this, I could imagine there would be a lot of cost pressures to keep costs low over the future in order to, to support as many low-income situations as possible. But is there built in to the agreement, a maintenance of the exterior that would ensure the building upkeep?
Yeah, I had the same questions, like who owns and where does the money come from for the maintenance? And I know it's not our purview, but I mean, it's really important to understand. Because I'm thinking, Prue, would I go in St. Louis, right? Okay. So that's what's in my head. So I'd like to understand that too.
Yeah, in regards to neighborhood impact, I think, to me, that seems like that's an area where we might be able to have a, some concern. It's not our concern about replacing the carpet interval or something.
You know, for our current ground leases on Skyway Road properties everywhere Izzy's and the Burger King is, for those properties, you know, we do have that clause that says that the property must be kept and may not fall into disrepair or be unkempt as general language. But, and something some will certainly be in the lease terms for this project, but we could certainly also have a close look to make sure that there are sufficient language that will allow us to make sure that this is, you know, this remains a good contributing texture.
So is it, is it St. Carlos's budget that takes care of this or Catholic Charities?
Catholic Charities will have their own maintenance budget, maybe even speak to how these are managed.
I know it's out of our purview, but I really would like to understand.
Yeah, so the property will be maintained by charity's housing. Where, so where that money comes from is from the rent that we collect from the residents. And so we run our projections for at least 15 if not 30 years. And we want to make sure all the rents that we collect are sufficient to cover our expenses. And obviously, by charging, you know, relatively low rents, we want to make sure our expenses could be met. And we want to be somewhat conservative in our projections. And we've been around for 25 years and we certainly intend to be around for another 25. It's not in our interest to let the building go to hell. And because if it does, the city and Al and the city council, they're the first ones going to get a phone call, aside from myself. And I don't need to get a phone call from the city, says, hey, what's going on? And I certainly don't want to come and do a lot of explaining because we didn't do what we're supposed to do. And, you know, that's my assurance to you and for our organization, that's what we do. We're in it for the long run. We're not one and done. And so.
I don't know how you do it without market rate housing. I don't know how your costs, I'll call you sometime, because this is actually what my dissertation's on. So I'd really like to understand that as an, as an aside.
I'm happy to talk about it anytime.
After I'm done being a planning commissioner, so I'll talk to you later about that.
One dollar a year land lease and a low-interest loan from the city goes a long way.
All right, if there are no more questions among the commissioners and no more presentations by the applicant, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, come up in the front, please. Either in support or opposition or just questions, feel free. Thank you.
Hi, so my name's, my name's Heather. I work for a property owner that's adjacent to this building as well as on the, further down the block on Walnut. And in, we've attended some of the meetings that have occurred. We understand the intent of what St. Carlos is attempting to do, but we have some questions regarding the implementation and the consequences for the neighborhood especially. We are one of the property owners that asked for the study regarding the impact of the higher-than-normal approved height limit. It impacts the property next door. The height, when you look at the aesthetics, when you look at the current neighbors that are going to be living there, it will impact those folks as well. We are concerned with some of the things that were raised this evening regarding the maintenance and ongoing, especially the parking lift, how that's going to impact and the concessions that have been made for low-impact housing. We understand how that works with California. But at the same time, those concessions don't necessarily have to be approved. It's something that there's a gray area regarding the improvement, and so we're wondering why that's being made. We do have some questions specifically for the council. The first thing that we saw is that, the first time we saw regarding this loan that we hadn't seen in public documents before, and maybe I missed it somewhere, but I was surprised to see that there's a 5.7 to a $7.3 million loan that's going to be associated with this project. We'd like to understand how that comes to be and who's negotiating that, if it's a market rate, if it's not. We'd like to understand more about that specific transaction because it hadn't been presented in some of the public comments before. So I was surprised it was snuck into this discussion as part of this dialogue. And I'm wondering if there's other, other public comments regarding to that. So that's the first question that we have. Is there anybody that can answer that?
Isn't that the redevelopment money, redevelopment agency, part of that?
Yeah, so the body that will make the ultimate decision on those terms will be the city council. So it'll be the city council meeting where all of those specifics for the adoption of the development agreement, where those will be discussed. So it's just a different body, well, that will be the public hearing.
So my question then remains is, at the last public presentation, they talked about the project's difficulty in getting finance in the open market. And my concern is that if the project cannot get financing in the open market, then the open market is telling you that the project may not be viable with normal funding. And so we, as taxpayers in the local area, how does that work with, you know, the negotiation of the rates and what's being afforded to the people in the neighborhood? So we, is that provided or do we have to attend those meetings as well? Do we need to attend those meetings as well?
I'd like to know the answer.
So I can speak a little bit about how affordable housing gets financed and gets built. And affordable housing finance doesn't happen unless there's subsidy. I mean, that's, that's just as simple as that. And because we're not habitat for humanities, we don't go out and get a bunch of volunteers and come out and hammer nails. And so we try to get labor, try to, we hired a general contractor, we hired the architect. We build it like everybody else and to the same quality. And so the only way for us to do that is find financing that's affordable. And subsidy, whether it's local, state, federal, that's what makes it happen. And do we sometimes go out and borrow money? Absolutely. Do we go to the bank? Absolutely. And we may not borrow as much compared to a market rate developer, but we still borrow. So it's a combination of both market rate stuff as well as below-market rate stuff in order for us to put an affordable housing deal together.
So are you using any of the, I guess it was grad program money type thing? I mean?
So for us, the biggest driver is the low-income housing tax credit program.
Okay, gotcha.
And so that will, that will bring us equity to the deal. We'll probably use some form of taxes that are bought and we'll use some form of local subsidy.
Okay, yeah, thank you. The low-income tax credit answer, I understand now.
Just want to give one piece of additional commentary. So the biggest portion for, for this project will come from these low-income housing tax credits, and there is a local subsidy that will help supplement to make the project happen. The local subsidy comes not from the general tax fund, but from successor agency redevelopment, successor agency funding, which is still remaining and has to be used before the funds have to be returned to the state. And so some of the funding will be encumbered in this project to be able to build these units. And it might also be supplemented from affordable housing trust fund. So the city collects fees from market rate developers to then contribute into this affordable housing trust fund.
Miller Plaza.
That's correct. So a few different projects around town. And so those funds would then be used to support developments like this and other similar affordable housing developments, but they would not come from the general tax fund.
Just so that I'm clear, you're getting a dollar lease for 60 or 70 years and you're getting a loan? And you still can't find financing in the public market to promote this type of development? I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly. Okay. The next question I have is related to, on the TDI parking. I understand that it says that it's supposed to meet a, required to meet a 20% trip reduction for the life of the project, which I understand now is 60 to 70 years. And it's required to be monitored and reported on the program. And if it's not met, that they're allowed to utilize different measures over time. What does this paragraph mean and who wrote it and what teeth are behind what that means when it comes with a puzzle system and parking that don't quite seem to be the normal protocol in the development area? And what happens if that's not really met in the next 60 to 70 years? And who's monitoring that, please?
So just to clarify the public comment process, so your questions are directed to the planning commission. And if the commission wants staff to respond, they direct us to. So, so you wouldn't ask us directly? It's through the commission is how it works.
And I know you know the answer, so I was going to point towards you anyway. So, because I know you already know the answer, so I think it's better than I can explain it.
So the city has a, I think Lisa, did you want to answer?
So the city has a code requirement for the transportation demand management program for the 20% trip reduction. It also has an annual monitoring program that they have to submit us reports to show how that's being met. And just so you know, the trip reduction is, it's actually very low here. And so I'm trying to find the exact number, but I think it's only one or two trips that they need to reduce by. So it's a very low traffic generation projected for this project. But it, they may have modified programs if what they're doing isn't working. So an example of a different program may be that they give some subsidized transit passes to help encourage more reduced trips. That's an example of a program that's not currently being offered, but if they see it's not being met, they could add that as a, as a new measure. But the city does monitor it annually.
Thank you. Was that the extent? Was that the extent of your questions? Anyone else wish to speak for or against the project? And I'll move that the public hearing be closed.
A second. Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. Now we can ask more questions of the applicants or the staff if we wish.
I would just have a couple of quick follow up questions for the architect, if I could. First, what was the constraint against below grade parking? It seems like we got into this robotic parking to keep it all at grade.
Right. Good question. It's cost first. It's always more expensive to dig. Second is on a constrained site like this, it's difficult to get the ramp and the, and the parking to work on it. Just the, just the geometry of the site made it very challenging, if not impossible. That's as simple as I can put it.
Okay. Kind of a second topic would be maximum height. So just to preface this, you know, I'm very supportive of affordable housing projects in San Carlos. And I think if any project is worthy of pushing the envelope, one like this is, but you know, this envelope is being pushed in all the directions from what I can gather, which I'm generally supportive of, but I, you know, I do hear constant concern about the heights of the buildings that are going into town. So why would a four story building have to be 58 feet, six inches high? That, that just seems unnecessarily high perhaps.
Fair, fair question. The simple answer again is that the, the ground floor, the first floor is extraordinarily high, given the puzzle lift system. So there's a, there's a clear height dimension there that they need to do that system. So that's driving up the height of that first floor to almost, it's like a story and a half or two stories almost by the time you get it all in. And then, and then the floors above are not extraordinarily tall. They're normal sort of nine foot ceilings, pretty standard for, for, you know, residential unit of this type. And then there's the, then there's the parapet on the top to hide all the mechanical equipment, solar, hot water, et cetera, et cetera. So we weren't, there was no intended goal on our part to drive the unit up to like improve views or make any kind of big statement. We would be perfectly happy to keep it as low as we could, and we did. And it's just the math just multiplied up.
And how high is that first story for, to meet the robotic lift requirement?
Good question. I should have this memorized, but I don't. I want to say it's maybe 16 or 17 feet.
The main part of the building is the 52 feet. So it's two feet above our height limit. It's just the, the tower for the stair and the elevator that gets to the 58 feet.
That was my question. That, that one brick part up on top is what goes outside the limit?
Two tower elements, correct.
The two tower elements, okay.
This will take me a minute, so feel free to ask another question if you have one.
No, that was it on architecture for me.
Exceeding the height limit, I see on the picture, the brown shaded, probably mechanical enclosure. Obviously that's one of the things that exceeds the limit, but what's the second area that exceeds the height?
There's an elevator penthouse that has the mechanical equipment, the hoistway for the elevator. And the other one's just the, as low as we can make it such that the fire department has stair access to the roof. So that's driving up the height of that, that stair tower.
If you look at the front page of your big plans there, you'll see both towers in that illustration.
Yes. I mean, just for our discussion, as John pointed out, the envelope is being pushed a little, a few feet on the sides and a few feet on the height. And it seems like we should pressure test whether that's really necessary because it does have impact on the, on the area, although a parking lot on one side, I guess there's nobody that's going to be complaining from that side of the building. So really there's only one side of the building that, that is facing another residential situation. But still it is, it is impinging.
Yeah. I should also point out that we are required to present a shade study to show what the impacts of the project were particularly on the residential apartments immediately adjacent to us. I don't know. There was a slide I saw flash up earlier and if it's still there, but I think the long and the short of it is, is that the building adjacent to us is a sort of C shaped, horseshoe shaped courtyard apartment building. It presently shades itself. So the courtyard is shaded as a consequence of its own building mass. So we're not really making it any worse or different from, from its present circumstance.
I have a question for staff. If we, since we're making the, well, we, you know, if we make the determination that we, recommendation that we allow for the zoning change to plan development, does that mean there's more leeway on the height than basically what we're talking about now?
Yes. The, the height is covered in the planned development zoning. And so the main body of the building is two feet, six inches taller than the height limit. And then there's two tower elements that exceed the height limit by eight feet, although we do have a provision in the code that allows stair towers to project 16 feet above the height limit. However, they do also need a large setback and due to those constraints to the site and trying to get all the affordable housing and the additional units, they weren't able to set that stair tower in. So that's really the, the exception.
Lisa, I'm looking at the view from west along Walnut Street and the plans. Can you, can this be brought up on the screen?
From Walnut Street?
Yes.
I don't know.
View from west along Walnut Street. I'm not as concerned.
I think so. Not this view, you're saying, a different view?
Yeah. It shows both towers and it also shows it from Walnut Street where.
The side elevation?
I mean, I, we do have it as part of the plans. I don't know if it was in this or not.
This one?
Sure. I mean, that, that shows it. I guess it's, this is the one that is worth looking at, I think, if we're trying to figure it out. Because this is from Walnut Street.
Yeah. So the, the taller tower is actually set back. So you see from Walnut Street, there's a shorter tower that's within the height limit. And then the taller tower is set in from Walnut Street, and there's also one at the rear. So it's not right on the, the street frontage there.
So if this was not a below market rate structure, we probably wouldn't be as lenient in allowing for the variation, the variances, I suppose.
Well, the, the code specifically envisions the way to get affordable housing on site is to have these, it specifically talks about bonus units, not counting in floor area and height, and then also about flexible setbacks in parking. So we're seeing the way to get that on is to do so. There's the city density bonus that does require the use permit. Then there's the state density bonus that's really by right. And for this project, they chose to follow the city density bonus. But the state, we have a lot less discretion in. And the other way to handle it would be through, you know, just a planned development zoning, which we've looked at for other projects. And again, some of these exceptions are quite minor when you think of the height, two feet, six inches, and the setbacks only just a few feet.
I mean, I, I, actually I'm happy to find ways to make the affordable housing work. Part of the reason I'm asking this question is just to clarify if we're going down a slippery slope in terms of allowing encroachments on the normal height limits for all, for all units. But I gather because this is a below market, there's the, built into the, the code, the provision to, that gives us this extra flexibility. And so it's sort of a special circumstance that we're working under. Am I maybe the, Greg, can you confirm or not my logic?
I think you're right. I mean, that's one of the considerations that you're looking at in what's creating the height is our code is designed, as Lisa said, to encourage low income housing by allowing these concessions, first of all. And then second of all, as I've said before lots of times, every project is unique and is not precedent setting. So when you have a discretionary approval, you, you look at each project individually and you're not setting a precedent. The next low income housing project that comes in, you may or may not be considering these same issues. And in a conventional project, you may or may not be considering those issues because we do allow some exceptions to this 50 foot height limit. It's not an absolute height limit. There are certain, there are certain provisions that allow it. And then only when it's somebody comes in and says, there's something about my property that makes it impossible for me to comply with your zoning code, then they can ask for a variance, which is different than the exceptions that you're asking for now. You don't have to make the level of findings that you do for a variance.
Thank you for explaining that.
And yes, I just wanted to also clarify, since we're talking about the details of the height, regardless of whether this is an affordable housing project or not, the zoning code already sets forth a maximum height limit in this zone, which is 50 feet. And then in addition, there are some exceptions to the height limit for certain architectural elements and height and for things like stairwells, et cetera, which allow a project to have a limited area go up to a maximum of 16 feet beyond the 50 foot height limit. So that's already a provision within our code. Just wanted to clarify that.
And can you just explain that a little bit further? So a certain, so there's, for a conventional project, 50 foot limit, but then elevator parapets and such are allowed to exceed it? Is that?
That's correct. So they're allowed to exceed the 50 foot height limit by a maximum of an additional 16 feet.
Over what?
For certain things like stair towers and elevators.
And you can't see those things from the bottom, from the ground because they're usually set back, I gather, so.
That is correct. The code basically says the setback from the exterior wall has to be one foot for every foot of projection that's above the height limit. And that's, so that's really the exception we're seeing in this particular project.
Yeah. That does leave us with fairly prominent towers here. It's not a high view site. You got all the bencinis between this building and Laurel. That's why I was drawing our attention to that view from Walnut Street. I think, you know, some people will be like, wow, that looks pretty big over there. But I guess where I come down is, you know, supportive of affordable housing and there are cost constraints on a project like this. That's why it's on a more constrained lot. I guess if this was a conventional project, I would take a, a very dim view of the parking puzzle machine forcing this whole building up above the height limit or the setback for the tower requirement. Here I can probably get comfortable with it, but I guess just, you know, we will have to keep thinking about this because we're going to see more of these parking systems installed. And I think that, that, that is a precedent, and I realize all these are one off approvals, but I would not stand for a precedent that says we can allow exceptions to our height limits because these parking machines demand more clear space on, on the first floor. At that point, I think they can go below grade to make those things fit.
I would agree with those comments too. My concern, I suppose, is we've all, the, the goals of the planning commission in San Carlos are to work toward providing more affordable housing for lower income people. People that work here need to live here. People that live here need to be near mass transit, convenient, cheap, safe transportation. We choose to live in the city of good living, as we call it, because it's a delightful place and we, we wouldn't, as a planning commission, do anything to violate that. So I, I support lower income housing, no matter where it is. I support projects like this, which I think is very handsomely designed. And I'm, it sounds to me like we have a great partner in Catholic charities to do this project. They have the experience. They're a charitable organization in their very name. When I first read these 200 pages in our package for this meeting tonight, and I saw that nine out of 10 things were exceptions, it really scared me. But then I went through it again and saw that they're quite minor mostly and compensated for, and it's legal according to the ordinances that the city has passed previously. So it's a complicated project, but city planning is complicated. It requires compromise almost every way you go. And whatever you do doesn't make everybody happy. There is always unhappy people. Sometimes people want something this way or this way. It's like politics, left side, right side many times. But I support this project. Thank you.
So I, I'd like to, like I mentioned before, there's four things on the agenda. I mean, there's four motions, four formal motions. And the one that we've been talking the most about is the third one, which is the design review. I think we should spend some time on the first, second and fourth one, then decide whether or not we want to make motions on all of them or if we want to continue any of them. But we have four motions that we haven't talked about.
Yes. I think we should vote separately on each of the four motions because they are complicated.
So I mean, do you mind if we, through you, do you mind if we start talking about the negative, negative declaration?
No, that's fine.
I have one really small thing about the negative declaration and it has to do with the birds. Is, is there an EIR person here tonight? Okay. So I'll ask my questions. It's probably very easy. It says that protective, protected nests, usually when I've seen these negative mitigations on, they usually say they just don't build during nesting season. So I wondered why we changed it and why we wouldn't do it during non nesting season. You know, it's a real petty thing, but I care about it.
So the rules that protect nesting birds are very broad in California, and it protects almost any native or migratory bird. The nesting season of all of those combined is most of the year. So it requires to take a look at if there are nesting birds in the area, no matter the time of year, rather than saying that some point of the year is automatically safe.
So do these protective nests actually work or do they scare the birds off?
They work. Yeah. We have biologists set up and it depends on the species and where the nest is, and they determine the distance from the nest that needs to be avoided.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hearing none, I'll move the, formal motion one. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending that the city council adopt the initial study and mitigate the negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report plan.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
So on, again, this is a recommendation, right, that we're making to the city council on this one. But basically we're saying that we're, we're recommending that they change the zoning from the mixed use downtown core to planned development, which gives us a little latitude on some of the things we've been talking about as far as height and those, those types of things, because it is considered a planned development. So it gives us a little bit more. So it gives us a little bit more breathing room, I guess is the best way to put it. So I personally don't have a problem with it. I don't know if there's any more discussion with it. I don't have a problem with changing that.
I would just point out, you know, I'm generally supportive of this project, so I think I would approve all these motions if we were ready to go in that direction. That said, I think the planned development is one allows for this exception to the setback for the towers, which I think is intricately related to the robotic parking and how that shoved up the first floor. So again, I'm supportive of this project, but I just point out that if we approved two, we're now just down to design and not actually considering that exception to allow for those towers.
All right, well, I just, I guess we're taking a straw vote here. I would approve first, second, and fourth one, but I would want to see and would not, at this point, approve design review without seeing more about the actual parking, parking plan, I mean, the parking design, whatever it's called, the two-story device. Gosh, I haven't seen your moment here. I mean, I know there's a presentation that's been made, right, that you guys have seen but that we haven't seen.
That is correct. So because we started receiving applications with lift systems proposed within them to meet the parking, right, we had one particular vendor, I believe it was from City Lift, come in and give a presentation to planning staff, to building staff, to fire, so that we can get a well-rounded response and, you know, ask questions across different departments who do review these projects as they come forward. So we were able to get more confidence in how these list systems work and the clearances that are needed and other details such as that.
Okay. And I guess it could be just done as a separate meeting, too, if we wanted to move forward with that. That's another way to look at it. We could ask for a specific presentation that's not associated with this approval of this project. That's another way of going around about it. Okay.
How long did they take to present the vendor on this?
I think we had an hour worth of time with them. You know, we had the opportunity to ask questions. They had a demonstration, a video demonstration of how it works, showing an animated video of how someone would, you know, drop off their car, how the lift system would work, and how they would retrieve their car, so.
I think we would benefit from having something like that, but I would hesitate to have it during a normal Planning Commission meeting. Perhaps it could be set up.
Yeah, I'm going to change my vote, or I'm taking a straw vote here, that since we can have that kind of presentation at a later date, maybe as a study, I don't know how you can do it, but not attached to this project, that I would, my vote would be yes.
I also would vote yes on this. I was reassured by the fact that the code requires that the number of parking spaces be available, so if the machine stops working, there is some recourse for the city. And I think our responsibility is to ensure that the promised parking is really available over the course of the building, and I think that the code enforcement is as much as we can ask in that regard. So I'm good with the parking arrangement.
Yeah, I...
I think we've demonstrated our concerns about the parking system enough. Tonight, I would support all four of these motions, but I didn't mean to interrupt you, John.
No, not at all. I was just going to say that, you know, I do think all of our concerns are warranted on these automated parking structures, and I do think our level of education needs to be increased. So we would accept staff's guidance on how we can best get up to speed on them. And I think we should go into those meetings with an eye on, do we need, you know, revision to our zoning to address the ongoing regulation monitoring? I mean, I think it would be likely analogous to what we do with elevators in town. I don't see how it wouldn't be. So I think going in, approving these without knowing we have some, you know, and I don't know if the state's going to do it. I think they manage the elevator regime, so I don't know if the state's kicking this around, but it strikes me as, you know, these are going to be put in, and regulation's going to catch up to it, and, you know, we at least need to have some understanding we're doing that. So that meeting is what I would like to get out of it, is just understanding a little bit better what we're getting into as we approve these things. And then, so I don't see a need to hold up this project for that review. But just in general, I'll just restate, I will take a very dim view of any commercial project seeking planned development exceptions to fit one of these automated parking systems in.
I'm good with resolutions one through three, but I wonder about number four. So that's supposed to be development loan agreement, right? That's the type of... And I don't know if I understand enough about the loan agreement to really cast a vote one way or the other, where I understand what I'm voting for. Heather, one, our public commenter, asked questions about why that would be needed. So that one, I'm feeling a little low on my understanding of what we're signing on for. It is just a recommendation to the City Council, I think, but if we are recommending, then we should know what we're recommending. So that's my one question mark.
I think it said we were recommending the 75-year, if I read correctly.
The 75-year, or is it that $5 or $7 million loan?
Well, the terms are, and I see your concern about this, but the terms are, you know, within the purview of the City Council. This is a requirement under state law that you approve the concept of the agreement. And we tried to lay out the information that we had for you. The loan amount will be either the 7.3 million or the 5.8 million, and the term is still being negotiated. It's going to have those provisions in it. It'll have, you know, protections for the city related to, like any typical loan, it'll be secured by the property in some way, and it'll have, you know, default provisions if they don't live up to the terms of the agreement. But if it might satisfy you to make sure that, and I have to look at the ordinance or the proposed ordinance, but it usually has a provision that I'm, you know, I'm charged to review the document, and then the City Council relies on my advice in approving the document. So, I mean, that's all we have for you tonight, I think. In a nutshell, we don't have all the details of the agreement, but it's the concept of loaning money to subsidize the project through the disposition and development loan agreement.
Well, that helps me somewhat. I mean, I think we all agree in our desire to enable the affordable housing, and if that is a mechanism to do that, then I would endorse that in concept. I mean, I...
That's my sense of it, is more we're, you know, we're okay, I think, with the City Council negotiating the specifics on the loan, the interest rate, the size, et cetera. I think it's the, you know, this is a very good project for the city. Specifically, we've approved a lot of projects over the years where developers have paid in-lu fees instead of affordable housing. And we often get asked the question, "Well, where does that money go? How does it end up as housing in the city?" Well, now we have a concrete answer to that. It went into 817 Walnut, and, you know, I'm assuming these in-lu fees are the pot that we're going to be loaning out of to get this thing done. So that's a concept, you know, I certainly approve and support. And that's sort of what I think I'm approving here. Is that, am I approving more than just that?
I think it's important to also look at state law and why they're asking the Planning Commission to have the review authority, and it's really putting your land use hat on. So it's the disposition of city property for use as affordable housing, and so that's kind of what you want to focus on. Also, some other development agreements also talk about exchanges, right? So what is the developer getting and what's the city getting in exchange? And so for this one, it's the affordable housing provision.
And just a reminder that I think part of the money, correct me if I'm wrong, Martin, is money that we have in our successor agency to the redevelopment agency that is obligated for housing. So that's part of, and that money has to be spent on housing, and that, or it goes back to the state. So we're, there's a time, we have a clock running where we have to dedicate this money to low-income housing right now.
And is loaning money satisfy that?
Yes.
Good point.
Okay, I now support number four. On number three, the maintenance concern that I had and the public commenter had, it would be nice if the agreement was worded in a way that ensured the maintenance was a, remained a priority against competing priorities in order to respect the neighborhood that it's in. I'm not sure that I'm going to vote against number three because of this issue. I'm just hoping that the staff can make sure that that is a well-crafted agreement in terms of ensuring building maintenance.
I mean, that's an appropriate condition of approval, that the car lift be maintained by the applicant. And if it's not already in the code compliance certificate, we can make sure it's in there as a condition.
So in addition, maybe the car lift, but I was actually thinking of the building in general. And I understand the charity's organization would do a good job, but the duration of the agreement is quite long, and so having some...
That can also be a condition, general condition of the building, appearance, landscaping, and including the automotive parking lift mechanism be kept in, I'm trying to think of the right word, reasonable or good condition. Could be a condition of approval. It's probably going to be in the land lease anyway, but it doesn't hurt to have it in this document.
When we're facing our fellow citizens, doing our, just because of the reputation of public housing sometimes, that can deteriorate, and it can be a very hard problem to solve. So would the other commissioners be supportive of beefing up, asking that that conditional use statement be crafted by the city, by the staff, to help ensure maintenance?
I'm in support of that, but I'd wonder how it would be enforced.
I got a lot of activity tonight here answering questions. It would be, there's two ways it's going to be enforced. One is through the planning department, you know, if there's a complaint about, you know, 20 years from now or something, when the paint's peeling off or something, or the landscaping's dying, we will hear about it. And then we will, the planning staff at the time will look at the conditions of approval that you're considering adding and say, "Yes, there's a requirement that you need to maintain it." And then that would start in our code enforcement process. It starts with a letter, and then it can result ultimately in a, you know, in a legal judgment that requires them to do what they're supposed to do on the condition. And then keep in mind in the background, there's going to be the land lease, and the land lease is going to have, and our current land leases have that, you know, the one in Izzy's that was mentioned before, Izzy's and the Burger King, those have provisions of property maintenance that are in them now. So I anticipate the land lease for this would also have those provisions. So there'll be two ways that the city is protected.
Any more questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
I just have a, I now know where I got onto the idea of low-income seniors. It's right on the front page of the plans where an exemption to short-term bicycle parking is requested, given that the occupancy of the project is restricted to low-income seniors. So was that initially part of the thinking that this should be restricted to low-income seniors, or is that just a mistake in the language here?
It's a mistake. It was never intended to strictly seniors.
Okay. And what percent do you think of a project like this would likely be seniors?
I think, based on past experience, we're guessing maybe 40%. I mean, that's just a guess.
Because, you know, reading that, it had me thinking of the project as seniors. So when Commissioner Bergman was mentioning making that second space up front accessible, that seemed like a very good idea, and that would be, you know, worthy of a conditional approval if we all agreed with that. But if this isn't a senior, and I think that would be warranted if this did have more seniors than the average project. So I guess I would just ask you, do you think you would be served if, do you think the residents of this building would be served better if we had two accessible spaces in the front?
I think we can always have that option later on. I'm not sure we want to do it now. I think part of the reason that we are keeping one that's not at the surface is we're also thinking about possibly providing an electric charging station, and that could potentially serve as a EV vehicle parking, potentially, so.
I hate to say this, but for the robotic parking system, is there not electric charging capability? If somewhere down the road, all cars are going to be electric, and they need to be charged.
Unfortunately, no, because the cars are on a, essentially on a tray, so the trays may move. And so if you're plugged in, that tray can't move.
So these systems are incompatible with electric vehicles. Ouch. I mean, I'm not going to blow up.
Especially since I read that Chevy, like, was going all-electric or something within the next X amount of years.
I know, I know. But, and there are other ways to charge. And I wouldn't blow up this agreement, but I guess this makes me all the more agreeing with you and John's comment that we need to get educated about these systems. I mean, that was an example of something we didn't know we didn't know, and so...
But it is true. This project then means there's, what, 23 individuals who will never have an electric car if they want to have a car, right? Because they'll have no ability to charge.
One charging. I mean, if it's a rapid-charging station.
That seems very unlikely. I mean, knowing the trends of the automotive industry and knowing the trends of the environment, we're going to be going electric in cars, probably at a really quick rate. I think it'd be unrealistic to think that there wouldn't be anyone with an electric car.
Well, they'll be forced not to have one. That's sort of the point. Even though I have no doubt someone could invent a way to plug a car in one of these movable platforms.
Just has a wiring problem in a way, but...
Yeah, so a future project that you'll be reviewing, the developer indicated that they do have parking stackers and that they're 100% electrical vehicle charging. So I think we'll get more information when we give you that presentation. Also, that if they had one spot, that could be a vehicle charging spot. Once your vehicle's charged, you can move it back into the parking stacker system. We're also trying to have more public charging systems as well. Later, you'll see in the CIP budget, they're looking to add more to Wheeler Plaza, and we're looking at other places to have more as well.
I have a question. Since there is the ability to do that, can we make that a condition, that we would have that this parking lift system be made electric, made available to support electric? We should be able to make that a condition, then.
So I'm not sure if it's the exact same system, if it's a puzzle, or if it's a straight stacker. There, you know, each system's a little unique, and so I wouldn't recommend adding that condition to this development at this time.
You would or wouldn't?
Would not.
Is there no electric vehicle charging required in this building currently?
The California Building Code requires that we prep for electric vehicle, so those are conduit that'll run to the space that we've been looking at as the potentially second accessible spot. So that's all the code requires. That's all that's, will be built day one, is the ability to add a system like that in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, I suppose I want to do something with that parking spot as far as, you know, if, if no one thinks that needs to be accessible because this isn't a senior-flavored project, then perhaps we should require that that be wired for electric vehicles since that whole stacker system likely will not be.
I would be for adding that condition.
I really think it needs to be electric, frankly. I could, I think that, this is my opinion. I think that they should at least look at that as a possibility and see what the options are. If it is possible, I think they need to make an electric possible, electric possible.
You mean on the stacker system?
On the stacker system. I just don't see a future where there's, I mean, you're basically telling people who live here that they, they can't have an electric car. I think that's unrealistic in the future. I think there's going to be a lot of electric cars. It's putting an unnecessary limitation on them if they're, if it is available to use the stacking system that is, is electric-enabled.
Jen, and I, I agree with your concern. I'm trying to balance that against my desire to keep an affordable housing, a great affordable housing project momentum going forward here. So I don't know, I'm trying, it's a, it's a, it's a tough one.
We can continue. You don't have to approve this number three tonight. We can continue it and ask the applicant to come back with information, whether it's possible, not possible, what the possibilities are. We don't have to, we don't have to disapprove or disapprove. We can always continue. I mean, I'm not going to, yeah, I have something I need to say. Anyway.
I just want to add one thing about the electric vehicles, charging stations. I mean, I think right now we're certainly cost-challenged in all of our projects. And like, you know, we just got a cost estimate back from, on Friday from a general contractor for another project we're working on, and they're 20% over what we have planned. And so we're, I mean, even before we start, we're already behind the eight ball. And so we're constantly fighting between kind of all the features that's nice to have versus what we can truly afford. And so I, I'm hoping that we could have a place where, you know, we're, we're happy to check out the options that's available to us, but I think we also want to be realistic about what we can really afford to build. And for me, the most important part is, is getting the housing that's affordable to the residents who needs it the most. And whether that electric vehicle charging station is right at the property or two blocks down, you know, I would choose the two blocks down first, just simply because I want to get the housing built. So I'm happy to look at the options and see what we can afford. And if we could, we do it. But, you know, I, I think it would be preferable if we had the option.
Well, Shannon would, if we asked...
I'm not going to stop it.
What?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'll, I'll hope for it.
Sort of going through the same logic I think I am.
Yeah.
Although.
You're too convincing. Again, I think having the housing there is more important than housing. I, I don't know what kind of thing, I don't know what kind of cost is. I'd ask you to consider it if it's cost-efficient, but I'm not going to make it a condition of approval. And I, I'm not going to stop this from moving forward.
Just a question, maybe for you, Lisa. What are the state mandates right now for electrified parking? If this was a standard project before us, are there any requirements? Or is it just if we're going to give you exemptions for plan development, we can request these?
Yes, the current requirement for the Green Building Code is that you have one space be available for future electric vehicles. So as the architect indicated, they'd run the conduit to that location, but you're not required to provide it at today's building code.
Yeah, I, just on the straw poll, I'm ready to approve this as it's presented. An option would be conditional to make that one static parking space electrified. That would not be probably overly burdensome on a project this size, but I am very mindful of the applicant's concern about cost and even getting this type of housing built. So I don't feel strongly on that point.
I would support the condition of making it electrified. I think just the, the mid-level charging capability, 220 volts, it's not a, people install those in their garages routinely. It's not a, if the conduit is also already a requirement, then putting a wire through and the, and the plug on the end is probably not asking too much.
I think it would be more than residential. I think it'd have to be one of those metered ones where people are, you know, paying or whatever.
That's right. You're right. There may be more to it than, but.
I think it's not so much a matter of wiring for it as having a space for it separate from the motorized parking stacking.
But that, that was the second spot that is not part of the...
Plug up the driveway.
I, I think that, just, can I just add some thought on this, what you're considering about a charging station condition? You know, I'm kind of concerned that we don't have a, we haven't really established the nexus of the impact of this project, and it really wasn't part of the DDA and the negotiations that happened. But I think you could put in a, what amounts to a condition that the applicant explore the installation of a charging station now, provided that it's feasible. And I think that's a condition you've done in the past on other projects for solar panels on roofs and things where feasible. I think this is in that category of where it, it might be, it might have impacted the economics. And I just, you know, the reason I'm saying this is because I, we're talking about the additional charging stations at Wheeler and the, the person who, the company that's going to install them says they're very expensive to install a commercial-style one. And, you know, I, it, so with that unknown, we don't know if, okay, you're just going to have something for the residents that'll have a lock and key on it and the residents can use it when they want. And then versus the one that's more elaborate that is the uni, you know, the, the one that's compatible with all the different electric charging plugs and it gets to be more difficult. So that's, I think, where the feasibility comes in. So that's sort of what I'd recommend that you do. Instead of saying you're going to put one in without really having the details of what you're asking them to put in, I'd just say, put, explore putting an electric charging station in that extra spot and install if it, if it's feasible, which I think would be a reasonable approach.
I would support that. I mean, it's a baby, a baby step in the right direction. At least it makes, at least there would be some direction, effort in that direction.
So if we were looking at number three, we'd be looking at the two addition, conditions of, two additional conditions of approval. One would be about the charging station. Second one would be about the...
Maintenance.
The maintenance of the building and even though it's handled in the lease, having it doubly handled in the, by the planning.
That would, that would, that would be my preference.
I'm fine with both those.
Okay. In, in that case, I would like to move that we approve all four of these, so should...
Well, you've approved the first one, so we're on the, you should go in order of two through, through, through four. That's separate motions.
Can I, I'll, I'll make...
And the condition, the conditions you're talking about are attached to number three.
So for number two, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending the City Council adopt the Plan Development Ordinance and the Planned Development Plan based on the required findings.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, two down, two to go.
I move that the Planning Commission approve the design review, conditional use permit, and transportation demand management plan based on the required findings and subject to the conditions listed in the certificate, and the two conditions of approval that we've discussed that the city staff will prepare the wording for.
Let me just see if I can, for the record, kind of describe what, what those two additional conditions would be.
Thank you.
One of the conditions would be that the applicant explore the feasibility of installing an electric charging station now in the extra parking place on the ground floor, if feasible. And then the second one is that you are conditioning the project approval on the requirement that the applicant maintain the, the building in a, I'm trying to think of the qualifier, in a, in a reasonable manner for the lifetime of the project, including the landscaping, the exterior surfaces, and the parking lift mechanism.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes.
I move that the Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt an ordinance approving the disposition and development loan agreement for use of the site as affordable housing.
I'll second.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes.
Now, I would just congratulate the applicant on a terrific project, and we're very happy to be partnered with you and the city on this.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you for coming and doing the hard work. All right, that concludes that project. We have one other item added for today. The resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Carlos finding the proposed new programs for inclusion within fiscal year 2018 to 2020, capital improvement program in conformance with the City of San Carlos General Plan.
Yes, good evening, Chair Bradley and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porras, Planning Manager, and I'll be giving this presentation to the Commission this evening. Normally, we generally bring this forward during the two-year budget cycle and any updates to the capital improvement plan, or excuse me, capital improvement program that are proposed as part of that budget process. And then what typically happens is we have a mid-year budget review, any adjustments that need to be made, including any new capital improvement programs that are requested are then presented to the City Council for their consideration. So what we have before the Commission this evening is a total of actually six new projects, and it was five, but the City Council had a study session just very recently on May 28th, and they added in the sixth. So that information was included on the diocese evening, and we provided additional copies at the back of the, of the, of the room next to all of the other handouts. And I'll discuss that as we go along. So just for the record, there is a, a modified resolution that accounts for that sixth project that was just added by the council, and then also a description of that project and some corresponding general plan policies that support that. So with that, I will go ahead and start. Just a little bit of background, the capital improvement program is essentially a plan that identifies all public infrastructure improvements that the city will carry out in generally over a five-year period. So the CIP is generally a five-year plan, and the city periodically reviews it and updates it as necessary. This plan for capital improvement projects, those need to be consistent with the generals, with the city's general plan. Of course, we wouldn't want to be adding projects to the city budget that weren't compliant with the city's general plan. So part of that process affords the Planning Commission with the opportunity to look at the projects and, and find that they generally are supported to be carried out under city general plan goals and policies and objectives. As I mentioned, as of the writing of this report and when it was distributed, there were only five new projects identified. But then just recently, on May 28th, during a study session, the council identified a sixth. So this slide here just presents all six of those proposed new programs. One has to, or excuse me, involves the possibility of creating a downtown plan of some sort, and I'll get into that detail a little bit later. Another project has to do with installing and designing locations for cameras within the new Wheeler Plaza public parking garage. The third is essentially a condition of approval that came out of the Transit Village project, now, now otherwise known as Tressel Apartments, that require the development to contribute a, contributions towards street trees. And so those funds need to be identified in the CIP, which can then later be drawn upon in consultation with the community about how exactly where to place those trees. The fourth project is one that was brought to our attention and directed for staff to pursue by the City Council. It's one of their new strategic objectives, and that has to do with taking a look at our land use and regulatory options and development standards, looking at those more closely to see how we might adjust them to increase more housing availability, especially affordable housing. The fifth project has to do with Chilton Park improvements. So there are some preliminary plans that were developed with certain features on what public improvements could be made, made for that park. And that's on one of the new C, proposed new CIP programs as well, or projects as well. And that sixth one that just came up recently had to do with more improvements being made to that Wheeler Plaza public parking garage, including more lighting, some painting, and provisions for additional electrical vehicle charging stations. So I'll just go through these real briefly. They were all discussed in the staff report, and the corresponding general plan, supporting general plan policies were included as a detachment. As I went through the general plan, there's just so many policies to support, a lot of the things that are on, that are proposed to be included in the CIP, so I just put those in the back as an attachment, but those were obviously included in your packet. So the, the, this, this new concept for some sort of downtown plan, and we don't know exactly how that will evolve just yet, but this essentially came forth out of a City Council retreat, and they created a new strategic objective, which basically directed staff to come up with some sort of vision to enhance and improve and to protect the downtown. The scope of work would be refined with a City Council Downtown Subcommittee, and then we would go back to the City Council to seek further direction for exactly how that plan would evolve. And that would be something that would be done by the end of this year. And depending upon the scope of the project, it could take between two to three years to complete, depending upon what's ultimately selected by the council. So, you know, there was a lot of discussion about different things that could happen, you know, within the public realm itself, like a streetscape improvement plan, or a really robust streetscape improvement plan, or perhaps looking at some of the standards that are currently in place to guide new development in the downtown core. The second project proposed, as I mentioned, is really just essentially that, looking at a study to review the design and placement and number of cameras in the Wheeler Plaza public parking garage to provide for enhanced safety. And additional features that would be looked at is emergency call stations, and all of this is to provide added security and protection for that new public garage that the city, that the city now has. I don't know if I need to elaborate further on the street tree fund, but as, I don't think, yeah, so it's been quite a while. There's no commissioners here that were on the...
Was.
Except for Shannon during the, the review of the Transit Village. But essentially, this amounted to a condition of approval. So there is a developer-funded component to this, and it needs to be memorialized in the CIP, so those funds can be reserved in their own set bucket of, of money, which can then be distributed to the East San Carlos neighborhood.
I know Scott Marsters would feel proud.
And we have received the funds, so they just need to be memorialized. And we have received the funds, so they just need to be memorialized. The fourth project came out of the City Council Retreat earlier this year, and they made it a strategic objective when they passed their strategic objective plan. And they basically are directing staff to address zoning regulations and look at all of our housing programs in aim to increase availability of all types of housing, including especially affordable housing. This essentially came up and was discussed at a subsequent housing study session that staff had with the council. There was a lot of discussion about how the city is essentially doing well, meeting its overall housing needs and just straight numbers. But where we were falling short is, of course, getting the affordable housing and lower-income housing to be built in our city. So the council finds this to be of utmost importance, so they want us to take another look at our regulations, to look closely at our parking standards and other standards, our below-market-rate housing ordinance. There's a whole host of different programs we could look at to see how we're doing and make sure that we're doing all we can in order to support housing in the city.
Lisa, if I could just pause you for a second. I live on Chilton Avenue about 100 feet away from this park. Is that something I, so I recuse myself from this particular item, or?
Yes, yes, you should.
Okay.
Well, I think you could, I think actually, I think the best way to do it is, we should defer the, well, it's one action. Yeah, I think you probably, in an abundance of caution, you should recuse yourself on it because the, this particular item does affect you differently than the public generally since you're within the 500 feet of the project.
Okay.
So, sorry about that. So yeah, so you've, so you need, you have to leave the dais and stand outside and.
Recuse the, of all five?
Because it's not broken out separately. I was trying to think if there's a way we could kind of separate out the Chilton Park improvements from the resolution, but I don't think we can at this point.
Sorry about that. So this CPI program, or excuse me, project for Chilton Park improvements would involve new pathways, an accessible trail, a newly created and more defined park entrance, a totlot play area, some public gathering space, kind of more passive space near the rocky area portion of the site, some new hillside steps coming off of Bayview Drive, a drinking fountain, new plantings, and some interpretive signage. This is described more completely in the staff report, but essentially the funds would initially be used to complete the design of the project, and where funds to actually construct it would be come forward to the council at a later date. And then finally, moving on to the sixth item, the most, the newest item that was recently added, added was again for Wheeler Plaza public parking garages. As I mentioned before, they're looking at increasing the funds to, to be able to paint the interior of the garage, to add more lighting within the area for safety, and specifically adding three more electric vehicle stations due to citywide demand. Should the, should the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding that these items are in conformance with the general plan, the next steps involve really just one step, which is slated for June 24th, where the city council is scheduled to act on the mid-year budget provisions, including the new CIP projects that were presented to the commission this evening. This is the formal motion, should you choose to make it, and both myself, Al, and Greg are here this evening to answer any questions you may have.
Looks, looks good to me.
I'll move to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission finding the proposed new programs for inclusion within the fiscal year 2018 and 19 and 20 capital improvement program in conformance with the San Carlos General Plan.
Second. Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on, we have reports. Yeah, get John back.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bradley. Staff does not have any items to report on with respect to recent City Council actions.
Okay. Anything the commission wants to report on? Well, we're going to have a scheduled meeting as usual in two weeks, as far as we know.
Yes, I was going to do that at the end, but certainly, no, that's certainly fine. Yes, we are scheduled to have a Planning Commission hearing on the 17th of this month. It would actually be a light agenda. Some things got moved around, but we do have an application for a use permit for a, a new gym proposed at 9:30 commercial, so that'll be coming before you. We also have election of officers, so it's that time of year where the commission will select a new chair and vice chair, as well as a member of the commission to serve on the RDRC. And then also, it will be Commissioner Bergman's last Planning Commission hearing, concluding her six-year term on this commission. I cannot believe it's been six years, but it has. It goes by quite fast. So we'll be recognizing Shannon as well that evening.
Thank you for that. Okay. We're going to miss her.
Just, just a heads up, I'll be out of town and unable to attend on that date.
On?
On the, on the, in two weeks.
In, okay, on June 17th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Be careful, you might get volunteered for something.
The concern did cross my mind.
I nominate any absent commissioners to the RDRC.
All right, if there's nothing else, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.